Town meeting at seven o'clock. My name is Darrell Nardi, your town moderator.
Welcome to town board's special town meeting for November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P.M., and the meeting is open. I have been informed by the town clerk that we do have a quorum and we can proceed with the town's business. So with that being said, please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And if you're following the movement, stand. One nation, one government, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Before we get started tonight, folks, I just have a quick announcement that the town administrator on the board of selectmen wanted me to read this evening. The town is actively looking for residents to serve on the following boards, committees, commissions, or councils. There's two vacancies currently on the capital planning committee, and that would be to contact myself, the town moderator. My email and my cellphone is available at the selectman's office, and I believe there's it will be posted on the website. There's also one vacancy on the finance committee, which is also appointed by the town moderator. And we have vacancies in the veterans council, and you would have to see the selectman's office for that. For more information regarding these vacancies, visit the town's website at www dot Warren hyphen M A dot gov. So to start, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed you are directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Warren qualified to vote in elections in town affairs to meet at the Quabog Regional Middle High School at two eighty-four Old Westbrook Field Road, Warren, at seven P.M. on Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting the attested copies of the warrant, therefore, as follows: one copy at the Shepherd Municipal Building, one copy at the Warren Post Office, one copy at the West Warren Post Office, and one copy at the community board adjacent to the senior center fourteen days at least before the time for holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make to return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk, given under our hands this second day of November in the year two thousand twenty-three. So with that being said, just a few things, folks. Prior to the meeting, I'd like to go over just some of the basic procedures, requirements. If you're a non-registered voter, you should be sitting to my right, your left. So if you're not a registered voter, you should be sitting over on this section over here. All registered voters should be sitting in the center section here. Everyone should have received their clickers. If you haven't, you should go outside and receive them, but they should have them by now. We encourage discussion and debate during motions and articles when they're brought up. We want to move the meeting along. It's thirty-six articles this evening. Hopefully, we can we can expedite this fairly quickly. The way the clickers work is we will have discussion. Once discussion is closed, I will announce to the town clerk to open the vote. I'll count off about fifteen seconds in my head. I'll announce five seconds. I'll ask the clerk to close the vote, and then the results of the motion will be posted on the screen behind me. One last thing, the amounts of the articles. As in past practice and our previous moderator, myself, article amounts cannot be raised at the town meeting. It can be lowered, but articles cannot be raised. The appropriations are set by the finance committee and the board of selectmen, and the department has to have worked on this. So the amounts that are in here, the motions will be read with those amounts. We will not have those raised. We do not want to have an impact on the taxpayer after the board of selectmen and the finance committee have already discussed the appropriations and how these will be funded. So with that being said, does anybody have a question? Yes, shout out.
So you can't make a motion to change it?
You can make a motion to lower it, but you can't make a motion to increase it. Yes, you can. Motions will be read and then presented to myself. They need to be in writing. So if a motion was to reconsider an article and somebody brought that up, you need to write that motion to reconsider out and present it to me upon reading it. You can't just read the motion. I need something in writing to hand over to the town clerk afterwards. So any other questions before we proceed? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for Article one.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I motion, I move that the town vote transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to stabilization.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you, sir. Seeing none. That being said, are you ready? While she's doing that, folks, I also want to announce that the meeting is being both video and audio taped and going out live.
Done.
You set? So we can open the vote?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. I will await a motion on Article two, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred thousand to capital stabilization.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sir.
Seeing none, we're ready. I will open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. I will await a motion on Article three, please.
Motion three. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eighteen thousand for building maintenance and improvements as follows: seventy-five hundred to the Shepherd Building Office improvements line, three thousand to Town Hall Repair Maintenance Line, and seventy-five hundred to the Council of Aging Maintenance Line.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and folks, so before I call on you, the warrant read twenty-four thousand, just so you know that that was a typo. The amount, the total amount for those three items totaled out to eighteen thousand. So that was a typo, and the motion was read as eighteen thousand. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none. You all set, Lori?
Yeah.
We'll open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. I will await a motion on Article four, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of two hundred and, no, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for repairs to the roof at the senior center.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to made in second. Any questions? No? Lori, you all set?
Yeah.
Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. I will await. A motion on Article five, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from COA custodian salary the sum of twenty-six hundred dollars to the Council of Aging Maintenance Line for additional building improvements.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. I will await a motion on Article six, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand to pay for staff training.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
What is the training? Who are we training?
I'm gonna recognize you guys. Can I just call for a roll call vote to recognize the town administrator and the chief of police when called upon to speak tonight, just with a simple yea or nay? All those, I'll make a motion to allow them to speak. Do I have a second?
No second, Dave.
Motion to made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Thank you. So this this training is for all town staff, and this is gonna be focusing in on customer service training, dealing with difficult people at difficult times, and this training will be for all municipal staff employees.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready?
Ready.
Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. I'll await a motion on Article seven, please.
I move that the town, sorry about that. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to vocational educational transportation for an increase in transportation costs for an out-of-district student.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. I'll await a motion on Article eight, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the accountant salary line the sum of sixteen thousand dollars to the assistant town accountant salary line.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion to made in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Is this a new position?
This is not a new position. Unfortunately, we are losing our full-time town accountant to another community, and so the assistant town accountant will be filling in until we can properly do a full
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? We'll open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. I will await a motion on Article nine, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the maintenance to the town's levee.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to made in second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Where is the town's levee? That's what I'm asking.
It's the dam by the mill complex, by the Wrights Mill Complex, that dam that's there. It's a levee system, and the Corps of Engineers has notified us that the town actually owns it. So we have to maintain it. If we don't maintain it and there's a problem and it breaches, then the town will be responsible for the full amount of money, which could be millions of dollars. So we have to maintain it to make sure that there's no problems. If we maintain it, then the Corps of Engineers will charge us on an amount. If it does breach or something happened or an incident happened, and we wouldn't be charged all that amount. So we might be responsible for twenty percent instead of a hundred percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Who's gonna maintain it? What does that entail?
So we're looking at hiring a company to do cameras to inspect the valve systems on there, because that was part of the Corps of Engineers inspection. We've been doing an annual inspection with them, and so far we've checked off a lot of the inexpensive items for them. We have a trailer, sandbags, things like that, shovels, means of damming up levees. Now we have to have more technical aspects of the levee system checked. So we have to contract that out and hire somebody to do that, and also brush clearing. We have to have some of the trees removed along the levee system, because that whole river bankment that goes underneath the bridge and around is part of the levee system. So we have to have those larger trees removed out of there, because they're actually compromising the levee by pushing those rocks down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
My question, is the rest of the system, the rest of the system material in the years is basically armed, why don't we just bypass that and ask?
No, I agree with that.
Mr. Nix, will you repeat yourself or speak a little louder?
Or you can come to the mic.
It's on the mic, Tom.
With the condition of the rest of the system that was originally put in the town by the Corps of Engineers, they've all broken down. All the other dams are now gone. This is the only one I'm.
Why don't we just bypass that?
Let the river go where the river goes.
I just want to understand, why would it fix that one piece of it and not end it up right?
The whole system is gone.
So it's not actually the dam, it's the levee part of it. So the levee runs through the mills on the south side, and then as the river, as you go under South Street and the river curves, that whole wall there of rock, that's part of the levee. And then on the, what would then be the west side, as you come around, is part of the levee also, and then it kind of continues down as it goes back east. So really has nothing to do with the dam in a way. It's more like the surrounding area around it.
It's a flood control mechanism. That's why it was put in there, and it was congressional. It was voted as a congressional thing. Yeah, but we're responsible for it now. And that's why the Corps still inspects it. They still come in and check it, make sure that we're maintaining it. And the town agreed to this. The town agreed that this is gonna be something we do. Unfortunately, there's no business in the mill complex right now, and, you know, that's what the original purpose was. It was there put for. But now, now it's something we kind of, we have. It's cards are being dealt with. We have to deal with it. We can't just let it deteriorate, because if it breaks down and starts flooding properties, the town's responsible for it. So that's why we have to maintain it. And to get it out of there, I think we would have to go through state Congress.
D E.
D E and.
Yeah, it would be a nightmare.
Yeah, we have to go through a whole process to get it out of there.
If we even could.
If we could even do it, yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Are you ready, Lori? Open the vote, please. Close the vote, please. I will await a motion on Article ten, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars fifty-six cents to the Shepherd Building Expense Line for security hinges for the interior doors at the Shepherd Build.
Seventeen hundred, seventeen and.
Fifty-six cents.
And two thousand dollars for the power.
Washing of the building. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to made in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, would you ask Chief Mallett how many attempted break-ins or break-ins have we had at the municipal building that would warrant security hinges?
Chief? Do you mind?
None.
None he knows of. Any further questions? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. I will await a motion for Article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from facilities custodian salary the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to the Shepherd Building Expense Line to cover the cost of cleaning services for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three, to January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
November.
Oh, Novem.
Excuse me. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to made in second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
From July, sorry, July, August, September, October, seven to eleven, so.
Less than three months, four and a half months.
So we're giving an increase to the custodian, fourteen thousand for five months?
No. No, no. So, so this is, unfortunately, we have our custodian out, and this is a private company that is coming in to make sure our buildings are clean. Anyone else? Seeing none. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. I will await a motion on Article twelve, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars for twenty-eight weeks of cleaning services for the Shepherd Building, police station, fire station, senior center, and highway garage. Do I have a second?
I'm seconded.
Motion to made in second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
So this is for the next twenty-eight weeks, so this is from November to, somebody do the math, can you?
Still about May. May.
November to May for one, two, three, four, five buildings that the custodian usually took care of?
Correct.
Is it one company?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. The motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of nine thousand dollars, nine thousand three hundred dollars to purchase three electronic speed signs and purchase additional speed limit signs for the town of Warren.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to know where these speed signs will be placed. Number two, will any of these speed signs be in front of another selectman's house as one is now in front of Mr. Velez's house? Number three, why did finance not recommend? Thank you.
So first a question, I think Chief Mallett may answer. One? Or select board? So we've been having a lot of problems with speeders on South Street towards the school. So these signs are gonna, two of the signs are gonna be put on South Street on both sides. The speed limit on that road is thirty miles an hour, and people consistently excessively goes much faster than that. And then there's another one that's going by the senior center on the opposite direction. We have one over there, but we want to put another one for the opposite direction, because we've been having accidents. South Street's been a concern for us, because we do have the school there, and we did have a young child that got hit by a car on that street on his bicycle. So we're concerned with the speed there. We can't have a police officer there all the time, and it would be cost-absorbingant to have a police detail there constantly. So the speed signs let us know, they record data, let us know when, what times of day that people are speeding the most, and we could have proactive law enforcement in those areas during that time. So that's what we're trying to do. It's a safety thing, and this is probably the easiest way. They seem to be working in other parts of the town. People do slow down for them, so we think it's a good idea.
And the third part of our question was, the finance committee does not recommend it. We do have a member of the finance committee here to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There were three primary reasons the finance committee was not recommending this article. First, it would be more appropriate for the article to be both advanced and funded by the police department rather than the select board using free cash. Secondly, the town currently has five radar speed signs. One of those is portable. The others are stationary, but they can be relocated as desired with minimal effort. And thirdly, there is no need for additional speed limit signs to accompany the radar signs. The radar signs themselves can display the posted speed limit in case a driver might be unaware. The current locations, it's very unlikely that a driver would be unaware of the posted speed line, speed sign, speed limit, I should say, as they're currently, there's posted speed limits within two tenths of a mile of all the current ones in use.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing none. Lori, are you ready? We'll open the vote, please. Excuse me. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion fails, does not carry. I'll await a motion on Article fourteen, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty thousand dollars to commission a management assessment study for the Quabog Regional School District as approved at the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting.
Motion's made, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion, motion to made in second. Is there any discussion?
Is Wes supposed to be paying thirty thousand dollars also?
No, I don't believe they're in the financial position to do that.
No, we are.
Yes, we are.
But they'll get the benefit.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to know, was the superintendent and the school committee approached by the town administrator to have the assessment study? And.
I don't see a response.
And number two, whatever the response was, I would think that the school committee, they always profess to be transparent, so I would, I would think that they would agree to have this study done. And if the answer is no, maybe the town should approach through public records requests and get the teachers' contracts, the job descriptions of the employees, the number of students in classes, the ratio of teachers, students, and have the management study gather all this information and make their assessment. And number four, why did the finance not recommend?
So I'm gonna let the town administrator to respond, I think, one, two, three, and we'll throw four over to finance.
So it is critically important, an assessment study such as this is being proposed, and grant you, this was approved at the town meeting, at the annual town meeting this year, to look into this. We're following up. We're following up, and this is what it will cost approximately to get one of these studies done. Now, the study requires both parties, the town and the regional school district, to cooperate together. If, if one of those entities do not cooperate together, it will make the study very difficult to, to, to do. Um, and it will be, it will make it very difficult to get the true assessments of the management within the district that the town is looking for. Thank you. Finance committee, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the finance committee is not opposed to the proposed study being done, but as you've already heard, for such a study to be meaningful, it's essential to have the full cooperation of the school and the town, and it was our understanding that the district's leadership is not amenable to having this study done, and therefore the finance committee recommends revisiting this matter at a later date.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I would piggyback on that as well. Um, you know, it may take some, some time to, to ultimately earn that cooperation, and so this may, if this is not passed tonight, it may come back at the annual, if, after we have a, a further discussion on this matter. Thank you. Any, yes, ma'am.
Who's gonna conduct the management assessment study?
No, um, you know, there's an institute called the Collins Center at UMass, um, they are familiar with these types of studies, they've done these types of analysis, uh, for other communities and other school districts, um, so that is one particular place that the town would be turning to for possibly, uh, do, commissioning a study like this.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. Uh, we have a school committee that is supposed to be representing the town, and their elected officials, uh, they vote on the budgets, and I'm not my own school committee, and we have to watch those budgets every month, so, uh, there is a transparency, I just don't understand how we can't trust our elected officials that we put in there to do their jobs, and not work around and going around, and, I mean, I've worked with Steve Doug in schools in the past myself, and we don't always agree, but we have to understand there's a lot of federal laws and state laws that are mandated now for these officials to follow.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, yes, sir. So this study, it was already voted for the town, the annual town meeting, okay? Um, the town has already voted whether we're gonna do it or not. We're looking at the means of funding it now, and this is how we get it going, is through the funding source. With the cooperation with the school and the town, we're hoping we can conduct this study, and this will give us much more details on how the school is running, um, if this, this proper staffing, um, things are being done correct. This may go more in the favor of the school, they may say, you need, you need to have more teachers, or you need to have more staff, or, you know, or it might go the opposite way, we don't know, we're not the professionals with that, that's why we look for another institute that specializes in this to help us and develop that and identify, uh, shortcomings or shortcomings or, you know, there's benefits. Um, so that's what this study's for. Yes, ma'am.
I still have a problem with the Westbrook field getting the benefit of this and not paying us.
Noted. Let us confirm that they're not... So Westbrook Field doesn't have the financial means to do it. They're, they're, they're not in the situation we are. They're, they're looking at a two and a half override to keep their town running, um, so they're in some hard times right now financially.
That's unfortunate, but I'm sure there's a lot of people who are in the same boat.
If we can convince them, it would be great to get them on board too, but right now it's affecting the residents of Warren, and the residents of Warren are who, who I care the most about. I don't really care what's going on in Westbrook Field and what's going on with them, I care what's happening in our town, that's why the study's important for us to get this done, we can't wait for somebody else to, to make the... Yes?
All this money is getting thrown around, I'd like to know if free cash means...
Town administrator. Thank you. So, the Department of Revenue certified the town's free cash on, uh, October 12th of this year, and that was $1,580,795. Of that, before you this evening, there's articles that would be spending approximately, uh, $582,458.56. There's deposits into savings, which is stabilization and capital stabilization, of $452,000, the highest deposits the town has ever seen. Paying off debt, we're paying off debt from the highway department, the BACCO, of $72,900, which will still leave us in a, in a, in a free cash position of $473,436.44.
So, Mr. Moderator, my question to the board is, we approved the budget in May for the town of Warren, for them to operate their fiscal year '24, how can we be $580,000, which is more than the school system got, how can we be asking for an additional $580,000 at a special town meeting? It would make sense to me that if we had repairs and services, I understand people get sick and people need things, but this is something that's part of the planning process. As a school district, if we came to the town meeting and asked for $580,000 because we didn't plan to have things done, that would be looked badly upon the school district. Furthermore, the school district spends $38,000 by law to have an audit done every year. We're more than happy to share any staffing things, and I guess my question to the Board of Selectment and to the Town Moderator is if the study's conducted and it shows that we're short by 10 people, when we come to the town meeting, is the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee going to support that, those additional positions? Because we're asked to cut every year, but I'm just very curious, how can we be $582,000 over budget and we're only three months into the budget season?
Thank you. So can I respond back? So thank you, Mr. Duff. Again, if this comes back in the favor of the school, it gives them the proof that they need to show that they are running on the staff, and they have a study to show, so when they come to the town, they can actually use that study and say, "The town's own study told us we need 10 more teachers," and that gives them the evidence to do that, so that actually helps them, and it helps their case. Um, not doing it, we just don't know. And as far as the amount... So, the $582,458, um, that's to address some capital projects here i- in town, and to address some capital spending. We don't know what our free cash position is going to be until the fall, so theoretically, most of the time, towns address their capital needs at a special town meeting in the fall, um, or they could wait until the end of the annual town meeting, um, but at this time, because of one of our biggest expenses that is coming up, that's gonna be before you, continuing to, continues to increase at a high rate, a, a purchase that is coming up, that will be explained, it's, it's fiscally prudent for us to address this now. Yes, ma'am, in the back? Yep.
I just have one thing that I'd like to say about this. If we need $30,000, have somebody tell us that we need teachers, or you can talk to every teacher and tell them how under-scap they are, who is the authority that you're gonna tell with the teachers themselves? Couldn't that $30,000 go to something that would be more beneficial to help them, them more than they ask for, more teaching, more paid for something? Why isn't that on something that come their help with the teachers already paying?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Was there a specific issue in May that was even came up, like why did they have, was it decided that they need to do this assessment?
I believe the town is concerned with the continual rise in the school budget. So the, the rise of the budget, the budget increases have been 10, 12% the last couple years, uh, and that's an alarming number, and so with that being said, we're trying to see if there's any more effective ways or efficiencies that we could be working together to address those rising issues in costs. Yes, sir.
Just a question, and it's nice that we have all this extra money, but we're all suffering because of our tax rates right now. I said, "It's nice that we have all this ex- excess money, uh, but we're all suffering because of our increase in tax rates right now." I mean, we, we've made it a point that the town hall has been condemned, that the police had to get out of there, I've yet to see a move in that direction, and if that's the ultimate goal, the plan for this town, why aren't we socking some money away today to take care of our civil servants in town here, to put them in a safer environment, then evidently we've been told it's an unsafe environment today, and they should have been out six years ago? Based on what we heard?
So to answer that, we are addressing the issue of a public safety complex. It takes time, um, it takes studies, takes money. We've used grant money to pay for a study to identify the needs of a public safety complex, so that's where we're currently in the process. If people have been watching our Board of Selectment meetings, we've been talking about this frequently. Um, we had a study that went in, talked with the chiefs, both fire and police, identified their needs, um, talked about the size of the fire trucks that they, they have, because wire trucks are getting bigger, um, and it starts with addressing what we need for the size of a building. Once we know the size of the building and the size of the area of a parking lot, we can look for a plot of land. Right now, they're looking at three spots for plots of land for a public safety complex, so we're already working on that and moving forward that project. Yes, ma'am.
I think we're getting off topic, I'd like to make the motion that we do to a vote.
Okay. That's a two-thirds vote, uh, we can do that with just a roll call, correct?
You can try. You can do, you can call a two-thirds.
We'll try with a roll call, based on just me listening to everybody, so those in favor of moving the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, you announce. Okay, with that being said, we're gonna move to a vote. Town clerk, are you ready? Yes, 14. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Motion does not carry, 28 to 22. Can I have a motion for Article 15, please? Mr. Moderator, I move that the town votes, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to Selectment Information Technology account to fund additional email accounts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote, Lori. You ready? Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 16, please?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Cable Advisory Fund the sum of $2,524.10 to pay Valley Communications for prior fiscal year bills for the purchase of audio and video equipment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion is made in second, this is a nine-tenths vote, can I have the motion, please, sir? Is there any discussion? Can I have your motion? Thank you. Seeing none, Lori, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. It's nine-tenths, wait.
Nine-tenths, is that better?
That does fail, huh? Zero, nine-tenths.
Yeah, that's...
That should pass.
Yeah, how come?
That's fine.
Now we got 42.3. You need 43.4.
43.3 failed. Wait, 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 so by .3?
So do a motion to reconsider?
We can. So I have a motion to reconsider Article 16. Do I have a second? Motion is made in second, is there any discussion regarding the motion to reconsider?
So Travis, do you want to...
Yes, sir. This is just a motion and a second to reconsider, then we have to motion it again, correct? So this is just a motion to reconsider, so is there any more discussion? Are we doing a roll call on this, Lori? Are you typing it? I can do a roll call, it's just a simple majority. We're gonna use a simple roll call vote on this motion to reconsider, folks, okay? All those in favor of reconsider, any motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we will reconsider Article 16. Can we read the same motion? Can we read your article? Well, I gave the motion here, so I have to... While she's doing that, Mr. Nathan?
Yeah, I just have one question, uh, how this bill, I mean, I agree with you on that, but how is this bill so far?
Um, so what, it's, um, it was a bill that was prior to me starting on cable advisory, was like right around the time I started, Valley Communications, um, did not send it to the right address, so we never received it till about a year later, and then it took a lot of effort to figure out, to, to go through and figure out, did we actually receive this equipment, was work performed? Um, that took quite a bit of digging to, to figure out.
Any other discussion? No? I will reread the motion from here. So a motion for Article 16 is, "I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Cable Advisory Fund the sum of $2,524.10 to pay the Valley Communications, to pay Valley Communications, excuse me, for the prior fiscal year bills for the purchase of audio and video equipment." Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion is made in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none? I'm sorry.
Just a quick comment, this is not raising additional monies, it's not affecting the Patrick anyway, it's simply transferring the money out of the fund that the monies are already there, just to pay the bill, so I guess those five who did the vote of don't at least reconsider the vote.
Okay, with that being said, uh, this is a nine-tenths vote. Are you set to go, Lori? You are? Can you open the vote, please? Five seconds. Close the vote.
No, passed.
No, passed, good. Okay, um, where am I? Table, 17. I await a motion on Article 17, please.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $11,770 to pay the following prior fiscal year's invoices... to pay the following prior fiscal year's invoices, Barton and Legudice Limited, for landfill monitoring wells and PFS analysis dated May 19, 2023, in the amount of $10,560, and for engineering services and facilities inspection dated May 19, 2023, in the amount of $1,210.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion regarding?
If these bills were from May, why weren't they paid? I mean, suppose they're like, uh...
Sir?
I'm not sure about that, because I wasn't appointed to the Board of Health until August.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the Town Administrator.
Thank you. That's a great question. We have a new administrative assistant in the office. She reached out to Barton and Legudice. Barton and Legudice had time, only that there was no outstanding bills. However, two weeks later, there was bills in the system that were not yet posted to our account, which generated bills after the fact of town meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Again, it's relatively less than the money, or really, or bills, but does this mean that, like, $12,000 came back into the town office at the end? It has to be balanced out.
But it would have gone into free cash, remember pulling it out of free cash?
So, you're pulling out of free cash right now, at the end of the year, last year, did that $12,000 come out?
Yes. 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 It was budgeted for to pay the bill, we just didn't receive the invoice. Correct. Anyone else? Seeing none, again, this is a nine-tenths vote, due to it being a prior year's bill. Laurie, are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Passes. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300 to the animal inspector's salary to cover the additional costs of inspections for the months of October, November, and December.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the animal inspector?
I'm sorry, who?
What is it?
Oh. Sir.
The animal inspector ordinarily would be going out to the farms to inspect all the animals, to make sure they're healthy, because some farmers just don't call a vet when there's Yep, one minute.
Go ahead.
Hello, I am Tamara, also known as Tammy Dufrain. I work in two different roles with animals in this community. I work as the animal control officer, and I also do animal inspector. These are two separate positions. The animal inspector is underneath the Board of Health. The animal inspector per month does the quarantines for animals that have been involved in any type of bite, whether it's animal to animal, animal to a human, or suspected wildlife. There's 10- and 45-day quarantines. So, the stipend is $100 a month, of course, with more taxes, to be available, make sure that these quarantines are taking place, and then also to evaluate the animal, to make sure that there are no signs of rabies. So, that's what's done each month. For the months of October, November, December, I'm also responsible for doing the barn inspections. The barn inspections are for any household in our town that has any form of livestock, that could be as simple as just one chicken. This is required by the state. It's basically a census of livestock, in case there's ever any kind of outbreak, whether it be, you know, like avian flu, or, you know, with cows. Also, natural disaster planning, if farms were affected, that they have an idea of what communities they would need to prepare this for. So, it is required by the state. They only let us do this from October, November, and December. So, since there are additional responsibilities for that, in addition to just the maintaining of quarantines, that is the reason for the request of, for only those three months, an additional $100. So, the $300 is for October, November, and December.
It's just $100 a month, it's not?
For example, $300 extra a month.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You explained very well, thank you, but it's just, what if, nothing's going on with the quarantine in October, November, and December? Oh, the barn inspections? Okay. I, I, just for quarantine, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Can I just clarify one thing, though, with you? Mr. Ray, is it, are they annual inspections between that time period every year, annual?
Yes, so last year, it was around 60 households that I have visited. It's very difficult in our town, because we have a lot of households that, you know, have properties, you know, with long driveways, and, you know, the trees and the leaves fall, and I can kind of see that they have something, but if the owner is not home, I cannot cross their property. If I can see it from out there, I can just fill it out and leave it on their door, but if I can kind of tell that they have something back there, I have to make sure that I am communicating with them. So, this could involve multiple visits. It is a very timely process, and we are a rural community where a lot of people have, you know, all kinds of livestock.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none. Laurie, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $12,880.35 from receipts reserved for appropriations Highway Equipment Fund to purchase a hopper sweeper for $5,882.35 and a buffalo turbine blower for $6,998.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, sir.
I'm about to explain. All right, so, obviously, this was money that we have in a, an equipment account that, so this is not free cash, this is a savings account we already have. Also, the sweeper bucket is going to be very useful for debris cleanup after storms, construction work down in weekends around town. So, we don't have to bring out our antique big sweeper to take care of every little project. The buffalo turbine blower is a hydraulic-run blower that attaches to multiple pieces of equipment we have, will assist us in blowing leaves off roads, out of drainage niches, cleaning debris after storms, cleaning up leaves and everything, and with all our town properties.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any discussion? Seeing none. Laurie, you ready? You ready? Foot's been opened. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,000 to Beaver Removal Line for additional Beaver Removal Services.
Motion is made, I have a second.
Motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this? Seeing none. Laurie, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $46,286 to purchase a new Ford Police Interceptor, and to trade in a 2020 Ford Police Interceptor with approximately, well, over 105,000 miles now on it.
A second.
Motion is made, seconded. Chief, can I have the motion, please? Any discussion, folks? Yes, ma'am.
Didn't they get a closer of the town meeting?
Uh, I'm going to defer to the chief on that.
I don't think it was town meeting, we used other funds to get the last one, right?
Yes.
When did you get it to the last?
We got the unmarked in the beginning of this year.
Do you have to change it?
Mr. Moderator.
One second, please.
You read the mileage as 105, and it was 104 in the motion. Is that mine? Okay.
Just to clarify, chief did read the mileage as 105 on the trade-in, and the motion was, the, the lord read 104.
I just got over it.
Okay.
I just blew it as in today.
Nope, that's okay.
Mr. Moderator, I am not opposed to purchasing a cruiser. But I thought big-ticket items are saved for the annual, not the special. I thought the special. Usually, just doing housekeeping transfers and stuff.
I'll let the select board of town administrator respond to that.
So, to answer the question, it can be addressed at either one. This is, there's a critical need for, for a new cruiser interceptor. The 2024 models are going to be coming out soon. This, I believe, is going to be a 2023 model. There's some options that we can get that will save the town a little bit more money, get a little bit more on the trade-in at this time. The chief needs it. It's, it makes sense to do it now.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Do you have an amount on the trade-in on the vehicle? Is 3,500 right now?
Yeah, 3,500. And also, like he said, the model's changing next year. This is, we're using all the same equipment from the vehicle we're trading in, they're taking it out and putting it in this vehicle, so the next, if we wait for the next model year, that's going to go up with, new equipment's got to go on.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Seeing none. Laurie, you ready? Yes, Article 21. Set. Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote, and vote to re... Create the sum of $3,895 to cover the following costs associated with a new police hire. $3,535 to be added to police salary line for a new hire, starting start at four, and $360 to be added to supplemental salary line to cover additional educational incentive costs.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion is made, seconded. Is there any discussion? Thank you, sir. Seeing none? Nope.
How many officers, full-time, do we have now, and how many part-time?
Right now, we have nine, including me, full-time, and two part-time officers, which barely work.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laurie, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 23, please?
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to say that the next three articles are tied together. I'd be happy to answer anything. Mr. Moderator, motion, motion number 23. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $400,000 to purchase a new fire engine, number one, of which the town has already appropriated 200,000 towards its replacement.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Where are you going to put it?
Chief?
So, fire engine number one is a 1997 International. It exists at Station B, down in West Warren. That truck was specced, and restrictions on that station. This vehicle would replace that. The average lifespan for a well-maintained truck, which this has been, is usually anywhere from 25 to 30 years, 30 years at the very end. If we were to buy this truck tomorrow, it would take anywhere from about two years or more to get the vehicle in. So, we're right, right at the very end of the life for this vehicle. It's served us well, it has been well-maintained. You know, this is a, the town already appropriated 200,000 dollars towards this project. The cost on these vehicles is going up tremendously every year. So, the decision was made to try to fund the full amount at this meeting to save the town money down the road. If we wait another year and a half to two years and fund this project that way, we're going to look at anywhere from a 10% to 15% increase per year for this vehicle. So, it's going to cost a lot more. These chassis, anyone, you know, Jeremy, or anyone that buys, you know, unique, large equipment, they can attest that getting chassis is next to impossible, and the vehicle prices are going up so tremendously each year. So, that is the purpose behind this article, and the other articles are also tied to this.
Thank you, chief. Yes, ma'am.
So, it'll be, the vehicle itself is, will be a total of $650,000 to replace that vehicle. This is, this is going to be replaced with a straight tanker truck, so we're trying to save as much money with that, but this vehicle is expected to have a 25- to 30-year life on it.
And it's going to be started with Warren?
That's, that's correct, ma'am, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nathan?
Yeah, it's a two-phase question. How much are we giving for the old truck? And if we got a new truck, is this a toll, or are we going to get reimbursement for another truck?
So, again, once the money's appropriated, once we have a contract in place, we will talk about all of that that's coming in, and if that, if there's money that's left over from the project, that will be adjusted at the end from that, if there's a trade-in value for the truck. We have to just appropriate the right amount first. I can't, I have to go through the bid process procurement and everything like that, but the trade-in value for the vehicle will certainly be discussed in that, during that process.
So, we don't know what the trade-in is?
Not necessarily. I mean, from, from what I've looked at preliminarily, we could be looking at, you know, anywhere from, you know, 10, 15, to 30, depending on, depending on, you know, what they're willing to pay for it. But, I mean, that's a decision, you know, that we'll have to address down the road and how, how the town would want to go about disposing of that vehicle or turning it over.
Follow-up question, if I may?
Go ahead, John.
You said the major expansive they're hard to get is the chassis. What shape is the chassis in, under siege?
I mean, the chassis is in, is in good shape, because it's been maintained for its year, but, I mean, it, you know, it's certainly, I wouldn't recommend a remount or anything like that, that, you know, once you start doing that, and you start picking away at those things, you run into major problems, you know? I mean, these, you know, these types, those types of adjustments and those types of remounting and everything, again, it's a 1997 chassis. So, you know, going down that road opens up for, for some issues.
So, chief, if I may, just for clarification purposes, the total amount for the three articles would be to purchase a new fire engine excluding the trade-in on the existing?
That's correct. It's to cover the cost of... The full cost of what we estimate the vehicle being, being built would be, that's correct.
And if something was to happen, we traded that in, then money would then come back to the town?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Are we clear on that? Yes? Any other question?
So, again, there's additional monies, there's several articles, because the $200,000, this is a capital planning project. This is a multi-year project, so it falls under the capital planning, you know, procedures, and because there's already $200,000 appropriated, it has to be taken out of capital stabilization in order for us to expend the money. So, there's an article coming up specifically for that. That's why that's on there. And there's also an article that is tied to the Rutland Assessment, once again, like we replaced our radios, we got an assessment grant through Rutland, we're using $50,000 for that, again, that's an article coming up in the near future, to also fund the remaining $50,000 we need on top of that to complete the vehicle purchase.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Seeing none. Laurie, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 24, please?
Mr. Moderator, Article...
Mr. Moderator, Article 24, I move that the town vote to transfer the regional dispatch the sum of $50,000 to complete the purchase of fire engine number one.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion is made in seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? I'm going to open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 25, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from fire engine number one, capital stabilization, the sum of $200,000 for the purchase of the new fire engine number one.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion in second, folks. This is a two-thirds vote because it has taken money out of a stabilization account. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Got it. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 26, please.
Thank you, everybody. Motion number 26, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to the advanced life support expense line to cover additional advanced life support calls.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Thank you, chief. Yes, ma'am?
Do you hire paramedics out? So that's...
What was that?
No, that is not what that's for. That's to pay outstanding ALS bills from a paramedic coming into town to assist us on, on high, high acuity calls.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 27, please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation entitled "An Act Authorizing the Town of Warren to Continue the Employment of Stephen Perkins," as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court shall be authorized to make ministerial, clerical, and editorial changes of form only to said bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enacted as, by the General Court, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in seconds. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Do I have an explanation for this?
Yes, ma'am. So Stephen Perkins, for anyone that doesn't know him from town, Stephen is, is one of our firefighters. He just turned the age of 65 years old. In order to continue in Massachusetts legislation, in order to make legal, to continue for another couple of years, which he states he'd like to do, we have to enact a law to allow him to continue. This comes with some things that, you know, you know, different things that are laid out by the Select Board to make sure liability and whatnot, but I feel, Mr. Perkins feels he's physically capable of, of doing this, and I, I, I'm supporting him and agree that he is. He could not be here tonight, unfortunately, he's out of state, but we would appreciate the town's support to allow him to continue as a firefighter.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 28, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,100 to Treasurer's Expense Line for the purchase of a new filing cabinet and accessories for the Treasurer's Office to replace a non-functional, unsafe file cabinet.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this? Thank you. Seeing none. Laura, you ready?
I have another question. I think some of these filing cabinets are over $2,000.
Sure. This is to replace a file cabinet that's about five and a half feet high by about three feet wide. It's a vertical file cabinet that houses quite a few files in my office.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Can I have my motion for Article 29, please?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $72,900 to pay off the debt issued for the highway backhoe pursuant to Article Number 16 of the May 11, 2021 annual town meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion regarding this? Thank you. Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 30, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,550 to the Assessor's Expense Line for the following unanticipated four-year, 24 expenses. $700 for assessors and assessors, assistant assessors, continuing education, and certificate training. $350 for annual multiple listing service subscription, and $500 for mileage expense.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, folks? Thank you, sir. Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 31, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept a provision of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 37A, to adjust Clause 37 eligibility requirements as follows, to become effective July 1, 2023, for the fiscal year 2024 tax billing. Change in clause, change from Clause 37 to Clause 37A. Exemption amount, increase exemption from $437.50 to $500.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion in seconds. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Explain, explain, please.
This is for the line?
I can't hear you.
This is for the line extension?
The what?
For the line extension.
The what?
The line.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 32, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provision of Chapter 184, Section 51 of the Acts of 2002, amending Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c), to adjust Clause 41(c) eligibility requirements as follows, to become effective July 1, 2023, for the fiscal year 2024 tax billing. Minimum age reduced to 65 from years, 75 years of age. Grocery seat limit, single resident, increased from $13,000 to $16,500. Married joint residents, increased from $15,000 to $22,500. And then the asset limit, single resident, increased from $28,000 to $34,000. Married joint resident, increased from $30,000 to $42,500.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in the second. Is there any discussion regarding this article?
Thank you, sir. Okay. Open the vote, please.
Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Article 33, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,400 to the accountant expense line for an accounting educational training course.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Assistant accountant?
Ma'am?
Sorry.
No, this is in anticipation of our new full-time permanent accountant. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. You have a motion for Article 34, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 4, Section 2 of the Town of Warren General Bylaw by adding, in bold below, the position of town administrator and updating its purpose and its annual reporting as the Capital Planning Committee as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Yes.
A seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. You have a motion for Article 35, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139(c). No fee shall be charged for a license for a dog owned by a person aged 70 years or over.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries.
One person.
Can I have a motion for Article 36, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to remove the Town of Warren Personnel Bylaws, Section 2, Management Rights, Subsection c, by deleting the entire portion shown in strikeout as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none. Laura, you ready? You open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. All righty then. So ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the town's business this evening. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Everybody have a great holiday. Drive safe. See you next year. I will make...
Second.
All right. We're out of here. Thank you.